Our business meeting of the Olympia City Council. For the record, we have a quorum with Mayor Potem Nguyen will be joining us later this evening. So with that, I need a motion to approve this evening's agenda.
Move approval.
Second.
All those in favor of the agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We have an agenda. So our first item this evening is special recognition, a proclamation recognizing immigrant and refugee advocacy day. And we will begin with a shared reading of the proclamation, beginning with Councilmember Cooper.
Whereas the city of Olympia has prospered throughout its history from the extensive socioeconomic, political, and cultural contributions made by immigrants from every part of the globe and...
Whereas the city of Olympia welcomes all who enter this country to escape social, religious, political, or economic oppression, or those in pursuit of its founding promise of a brighter future and...
Whereas the city of Olympia is dedicated to the values of inclusivity, diversity, and hope. And whereas the city of Olympia has committed to securing the freedom, rights, and dignity of all people who reside here. And whereas, as a declared sanctuary city, the city of Olympia continues to demonstrate its abiding commitment to protecting all immigrants residing here and...
Whereas the city of Olympia welcomes the advocates for immigrants and refugees from throughout Washington who will attend the legislative session to advocate for legislative measures that will protect immigrants and refugees during and after the pandemic and...
Whereas pro-immigrant measures are desperately needed to compensate for the weakening and removal of protections at the federal level and...
Now therefore be it resolved that the Olympia City Council does hereby proclaim January 30th, 2025 as immigrant and refugee advocacy day in the city of Olympia, and urge all residents to join immigrant advocates to petition our elected state representatives to enact legislation to provide state and local government protections to all immigrants and their families in the state of Washington. Signed in the city of Olympia, Washington, this 28th day of January 2025, Olympia City Council, Dante Payne, Mayor. So at this time, I'd like to invite up Adriana Cortez, who is from the Washington Immigrant Solidarity Network, and Vanessa Reyes, who is a policy manager with the Washington Immigrant Solidarity Network, to receive the proclamation. Are they here? Are they present? Going once, going twice.
You could ask Bob Ziegler to come up.
Okay. Bob, would you mind coming up? And you're welcome to say a few words if you like as well, once you receive the proclamation. Thank you.
I'm a member of Strengthening Sanctuary Alliance here in Olympia, and several of us are here today. And there was, we were hoping to have folks from WISEN here. Things are kind of crazy now because they've been receiving threats and other things. But others, they're moving forward, and they say they're not going to let fear. This is all a move to make people afraid, and they're not going to bow down to attempts with fear. So they're coming with about 700 immigrants and refugees from around the state here in Olympia. And there's going to be a march that's open to the public from 1:30 until 2:00, from the corner of, on Capitol grounds, on the corner of 11th Avenue and Capitol Way, over around Tivoli Fountain and back over to the steps of the legislature for an hour deal at which our mayor Potem will read this proclamation. The city of Olympia has been very supportive of people here of all status, and there was, it's been part of our community values of compassion that has been really essential in so many ways. And we thank you for this and the courageous stand that you guys take. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bob. Thank you for just, you know, accepting that on their behalf. We'll just keep rolling with it. Any comments from Council? Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you, Mayor Payne. Thank you, Bob, and all of your team for keeping this conversation going in our community. Olympia is not afraid, and we're excited to stand by our values and stand by the people who live here and come here. So I think that's the theme tonight. This country is not a melting pot. It is a salad bowl, and we're so proud that everyone brings what they do to the table. So thank you.
Councilmember Gilman.
And here are our representatives from the Washington Immigrant Solidarity Network. If we might take a special privilege to allow them to speak?
Absolutely. So Adriana and Vanessa, so we welcome. We just finished reading the shared proclamation. If you wouldn't mind approaching the podium and share a few words if you like. Thank you.
So, good evening, everyone. I'm going to say my speech in English and in Spanish for like language justice. So, good evening, everyone. Buenas tardes a los miembros del consejo. My name is Adriana, and I'm here as part of the Washington Immigrant Solidarity Network, also known as WISEN, a statewide transnational solidarity coalition to protect and advance the power and rights of immigrants and refugees community. Soy Adriana, y hoy me presento como parte de WISEN, una colisión que busca proteger y avanzar el derecho y el poder de las comunidades migrantes y refugiadas del estado. We are grateful to the city of Olympia for recognizing the critical importance of immigrant and refugee advocacy by declaring January 28th, 2025, as immigrant advocacy day. This proclamation symbolizes Olympia's ongoing commitment to fostering a welcoming community for all. Agradecemos esta proclamación que simboliza el compromiso continuo para procurar una continuidad, una comunidad acogedora para todas las personas. Migration, or yeah, has been around since the beginning of humanity. The current immigrants build alongside the children of other immigrants. We have demonstrated that we can achieve amazing things together. However, some groups face significant challenges due to their race, ethnicity, religion, sexuality, gender identity, disability class, and citizenship status, among other characteristics. For that reason, it is important to continue advocating from and for our communities. Todos somos migrantes, pero algunos grupos enfrentan más dificultades debido a sus características. Y por eso seguiremos luchando. As we recognize immigrant advocacy day, I encourage everyone here tonight to reflect on what they can do to support their neighbors until dignity becomes a habit. Seguiremos luchando hasta que la dignidad se haga costumbre. We are stronger together. Once again, thank you to the Olympia City Council for this proclamation and your continued support. Together, we can build a community where all people, regardless of their immigration status, are treated with respect and justice. Gracias por la proclamación. Seguiremos trabajando para que todas las personas, independientemente de su estatus migratorio, sean tratadas con respeto y justicia. Thank you.
I won't have much to add, but thank you again to the city of Olympia, and we are grateful to be able to do this for many years in a row and to bring our communities from across the state, to be able to advocate alongside their neighbors, and for the city of Olympia to be a welcoming place. And we look forward to continuing to work with you all to make sure that every member of our community is able to foster and thrive, and as Adriana said, that dignity becomes a habit. Thank you. Good night.
Thank you both very much. And if you'll just stick around, there may be some additional comments from Council. Councilmember Gilman, do you still have comments?
Just to say that I will be there, and I'm really pleased that Mayor Potem Nguyen will read our proclamation at the rally at the Capitol stairs, and that the entire community is invited and welcome to join the march and the rally. Because you're right, that we're all here together, and everybody deserves respect and justice. So thank you.
Any additional comments from the dais? Seeing none, thank you for being here. This is a proclamation that we sort of do routinely every year. We recognize this advocacy day, and this year it takes on a different tone, certainly. And given where we are right now with the federal immigration policy enforcements, it's weighing heavily on so many communities across the country. Those who are, who share your demographic and those who do not. It's affecting specifically those who are people of color in a very, very unique and specific way. And I just want you to know that the city of Olympia, the city council, is certainly mindful of what is happening. We're paying attention, and we have your back. And please know that if there's anything you need, that you can come to us. I'm going to stop because I feel myself getting emotional. But yes, please know that it's something that's weighing heavily on me, certainly. So thank you so much. So with that, we are going to move on to public comment. I do have a few people signed up for public comment here in chambers, and then we have one online as well. We will begin with those who are present in the chambers this evening. Just a few reminders that there is a clock to my right, your left on the wall here indicating that you have two minutes of time for your comments. If you do not finish your comments in the two minutes that are allotted, please feel free to email the remainder of your comments to the council. It's not an election season, but there are some, there are very many things that are of a political nature, and so I would please ask you to refrain from referring directly to politics and speak to the official issues that are happening at the federal level. So with that, I'm going to call forward Lucas Scott Miller, followed by Aster Aberdeen.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, good evening. I'm Lucas Miller. I'm here for PFLAG Olympia. We are a local chapter of the oldest and largest LGBTQ+ advocacy organization in the United States, and I'm here to speak about the possibility of making Olympia a sanctuary city for LGBTQ+ Americans fleeing repressive policies in red states. Harvey Milk said, "You got to give them hope." And in declaring Olympia a safe place for people who desperately need health care for their transgender children, or places where their identities can be officially recognized, you will be restoring hope to people who felt themselves losing it in the last several years, and especially in the chaotic days since the inauguration. PFLAG Olympia has already received calls and welcomed new members from people relocating from places like Florida, Texas, Tennessee, Virginia, and even other parts of Washington. You know, we stand ready to welcome those seeking a newer and safer home, to offer community, to help them find resources, and to rebuild their social networks and support networks in their new home. We hope that the city will work with us on this, because above all, in these times, we got to give them hope. Thank you very much.
I know that this is a time where we could use a little bit of celebration, but if you could please sort of find a way to silently applaud so that we can keep everybody moving forward. Thank you. So Aster Aberdeen, followed by Alice Rosewater.
Howdy, Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Aster Aberdeen. I was the former leader of Olympia Trans Family, a mutual aid organization aimed at aiding trans folk in the community, and I am the current founder of the Olympia Queer Feared, which is a combat sports group that aims to empower trans folk and queer folk as a whole through the element of combat sports. And the main thing that I'm coming to speak with the city tonight, and my reason for speaking is about the proclamation about potentially turning Olympia into a sanctuary city for my kin. All of it comes from the fact that, as it stands right now, I've tried to play and keep my ear on things, and I know the city's been doing a lot of work, and I know that a number of people, both in the community and outside of it, have done what they can to try and assist our kin as they can. But one of the big things that I've noticed is that there's a lot of animosity between the two. There's a lot of separation. And I want to inform my kin that ultimately, if there's one thing, if there's one place that they can be safe here, it would be with the city. The city council members are people that are trying to do their best. It's a complicated situation, and there's a lot of talk of how they're not doing everything correctly. And mistakes happen, but in the end, the city needs help from everybody involved. People, if they want to have input on it, work with the city. Because if they're not able to get their goals accomplished here, then where else can you get it done? These are the most friendly people that I've ever witnessed in my work in politics nationally. And once again, I'm offering my assistance directly to the city to assist in any way possible as a conduit to the community or elsewise. Much more I'd like to say, but thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have April Miller, followed by, oh, I'm sorry, am I skipping someone? Alice Rosewater, followed by April Miller.
No worries. Hi, my name is Alice Rosewater. I am here as a representative of the Thurston Lewis Mason Central Labor Council, a body which itself represents tens of thousands of workers in the South Town region, to deliver a statement in support of the LGBTQ sanctuary city ordinance being considered by the city council today. We at the council believe that this ordinance is an important step forward towards protecting LGBT workers and their friends, family members in this region. There's a saying in the labor movement, "An injury to one is an injury to all." What this means to us is we recognize that our strength comes from the unity of all working people, regardless of who they are, who they love, or where they come from. And the number one strategy used against us by bosses and the politicians that represent them is divide and conquer. By focusing their attacks on LGBT people, and immigrants in particular right now, they hope to drive a wedge in our movement, to turn us against each other in order to make it easier to attack and exploit all working people. The solution to this crisis is not to give up and give in, it's to strengthen our bonds of solidarity by standing together as a community and to fight for democratic rights for all. That's why we at the Thurston Lewis Mason Central Labor Council call on the city to pass this ordinance into law and declare Olympia an LGBTQ plus sanctuary city. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next, we have April Miller, followed by Kathy Burrows-Fried.
Councilmembers, assembled friends, my name is April Miller. I'm a food service worker, a trans woman of indigenous descent, and an organizer with the Democratic Socialists of America, DSA. I am glad to be speaking in support of an LGBTQ sanctuary city proposal that goes beyond lip service and includes a number of actionable and specific protections for queer and trans people locally and in the contemporary context of increased repressive legislation. And we are already seeing the beginning of major attacks on marginalized populations and on social services. Just this morning, the current administration's funding freeze cut off Medicaid benefits for 70 million Americans, and in the weeks since inauguration, state attacks on immigrants have already ramped up. So it's going to get pretty bad, and we need to be prepared for that. And on that basis, you know, making Olympia a sanctuary for queer and trans people and for the oppressed generally will mean setting up policy agenda capable of facing up to attacks by federal institutions, and also of weathering numerous social crises. So sanctuary means decriminalizing survival. Sanctuary means harm reduction and safe supply. Sanctuary means social housing. Sanctuary means a living wage. Sanctuary means worker and tenant power. Sanctuary means a program of economic and social empowerment for working people, both at the city and county institutional levels, and also by supporting the self-organized, autonomous initiatives of oppressed people themselves. And so I will be excited to see council pass the sanctuary resolution, and I also encourage all of us to keep organizing and continue fighting, especially by building for a mass community mobilization on March 31st, Trans Day of Visibility, to show that working people in Olympia are ready to defend trans lives and rely on our own power alone to do so. Solidarity forever. Thank you.
Thank you. And do we have Kathy Burrows-Fried with us?
I did not sign up for comments. I rarely sign up, but tonight I did.
Thank you. Next, we have Ellen O'Brien Saunders.
I didn't sign up for a comment. Thank you.
Okay. We have Bob Ziegler.
I was going to the proclamation. Does he introduce, I was going to introduce Vanessa.
Okay. Okay, well, we also have Vanessa Reyes.
Okay. I already spoke to the proclamation.
Okay. Next, we have Anna Rose Pike.
Someone deferred.
Next, we have Parfait Basale. Yes, we got one.
As he approaches the podium, for those who are watching at home, I just want to, if you can't hear, there are folks in the chambers that are deferring their comments for this evening. So, thank you. Parfait.
Good evening, Mayor, and dear council members. My name is Parfait Basale. I am a community member. I'm also a commissioner with the Social Justice and Equity Commission with the city. The reasons for my remarks today, first, is to express my gratitude for your leadership, for restating our, being a sanctuary city, and also the proclamation today that reasserts where our community values are. I'm really emotional because my story is one of an immigrant and what the American fabric has done to me and the opportunities that have been afforded to me. I wanted to draw attention to some of the dire situations that has resulted from the flurry of executive actions that are impacting immigrants and refugees right here in our midst. Most of you are probably aware that about a year ago, World Relief, which is a renowned organization that helps with the resettlement of refugees and immigrants, opened a chapter right here in our community, and were able to effectively and beautifully help about 182 people become our new neighbors. Unfortunately, with the recent freeze and executive orders, some of the promises that we've made historically to provide financial support for those who are freshly arrived within the first 90 days has been halted. And so we have about 32 people who are in a critical situation with no access to finances, and the organization is also on a limp with potential reduction of force. And so that's an opportunity for our community to really step up and back the talk with the proclamation. So I'm really trying to draw awareness and invite us to step into our compassion, to really come alongside this organization and our newcomers who are very vulnerable in this stage, especially the first 90 days. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll go to virtual public comment. I understand there is one person, Timothy Leadingham.
Timothy is traveling. Oh, there he is, right there.
Timothy, you'll just need to unmute yourself.
That's a lot for a very short comment, but I just want to add my voice and also thank the council for your leadership on all these human rights issues. And I congratulate you for your support of all oppressed and marginalized people in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor, that concludes the public comment.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Potem. So we'll move on to adoption of the consent calendar, but before we do, I just want to confirm with staff that we were able to make the correction on the minutes. Okay. So we can move approval. I need a motion to approve the consent calendar this evening.
I'll move.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Consent calendar is adopted. So we will move on to our only business item for the evening, which is approval of a resolution declaring Olympia a sanctuary city for the LGBTQIA2S+ people. And with that, we have our assistant city manager Stacy Ray here presenting, as well as Arlo Kajaka as well, who is here this evening. Stacy.
All right. Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. For the record, I'm Stacy Ray, she/her pronouns, Assistant City Manager. So tonight, we're here to present for your consideration and approval of a resolution declaring Olympia a sanctuary city for LGBTQIA2S+ people. On December 10th, you asked staff to bring back to you a resolution that declares Olympia a sanctuary city, affirming our commitment to ensuring that all individuals, regardless of sexual orientation or gender identity, feel safe and supported in our community. You asked for a collaborative approach to developing the resolution that reflects our community's values, needs, and voice, and that includes actionable statements and, with urgency, to address rising concerns and fears in light of the new administration. The resolution before you tonight meets all three requests. It comes quickly so as to be responsive to the moment with actionable items, and having been developed with input and review by LGBTQIA2S+ and allied community members and community groups, city staff, including the city's LGBTQ+ Employee Resource Group and DEI and Police Department staff, and also with input from you as council members as well. The language included here also bars from other jurisdictions that have come before us in declaring themselves a sanctuary, including New York State, Kansas City, and Ithaca, New York. So for our audience tonight, I'm going to briefly share some highlights. I'm not going to read all the text, but briefly share some highlights from the resolution on the screen. And then following that, I'm going to turn it over to Arlo to share some comments as well. So the first part of the resolution includes six whereas statements that clearly state our community and city values, that we're a community where all individuals are treated with dignity, equity, and respect, regardless of sexual orientation, gender identity, or gender expression. The statements also acknowledge that sanctuary city resolutions are needed to address real threats to LGBTQIA2S+ people's ability to live free of discrimination, violence, and systemic barriers that threaten their safety, well-being, and human rights. Declaring Olympia a sanctuary city means recognizing the inherent worth and equal rights... rights of LGBTQIA2S+ people and demonstrating a commitment to protecting and advocating for individuals by rejecting policies and actions that promote discrimination, harm, and inequity. The second half of the resolution outlines what the city resolves to do in expanding sanctuary status to include LGBTQIA2S+ people. And I'm summarizing here with the resolution, but individuals have the right to gender-affirming care, to speech and expression that supports LGBTQIA2S+ people, expressing one's own authentic gender and sexuality without regard to biological sex assigned at birth. The city resolves to not dedicate city resources and make it a low priority to enforce laws that do not support these commitments, to the extent possible, protect information about an individual's sex or gender assigned at birth, and actively oppose legislation or actions at higher levels of government that threaten the rights, safety, and dignity And lastly, the city resolves to continue ongoing dialogue and partnership and collaboration with LGBTQIA2S+ community and cultural leaders, to reduce barriers to accessing resources and support, to continue to open up channels for communication and dialogue and reporting of crimes amongst individuals, groups, and build relationship with the Olympia Police Department so as to help promote safety and the well-being of LGBTQIA2S+ community members, and to continue to celebrate and uplift the voices and contributions of LGBTQIA2S+ individuals through events, education, and partnerships. So next, I'd like to welcome Arlo to share their comments on the resolution this evening.
Thank you, Stacy, and thank you, City Council, for the opportunity to speak with you all today. My name's Arlo Kajaka. I use they/them pronouns, and I am a steward of the Liberation Collective, which is a small community space in Olympia that invites people who are healers, educators, social justice activists to hold space and provide healing spaces for people with marginalized identities in our community. And through this work, I've had the opportunity to connect and build deep, close relationships within the trans community, which includes myself. And what I can say is, well, first of all, I think you've heard a lot of, a lot from the trans community in the public comment today, which I think says a lot, and there's not really much that I can really add to that, but I will share my own perspective about what this resolution means to the trans community. I'll first start by defining the LGBTQIA2S+. If you're not familiar with the full definition of, some people call this the alphabet mafia, which I don't know how I feel about that, but some, there's lots of fun names we've come up with it. And I think, like, really just the length of it speaks to, this is a community that is very broad and also welcoming. We don't actually exclude anybody specifically from being a part of this community. Specifically, the letters that are presented stand for lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, intersex, asexual, and two-spirit, and is also inclusive with the plus of many other identities. And it's also important for me to define that this group is not just defined by sexual identities and gender identities, but is also defined by a culture that is really grounded in love, a culture that's grounded in art, a culture that's grounded in resistance against systems of oppression. And there are many people who have theory around just how queerness really is, is an identity that anybody can hold in this, like, pathway of love and resistance against oppression, and the ways that we can exist within the world that go outside of the boxes that we're placed within often at birth. And so I just want to say that the trans community in Olympia is quite expansive. The queer community is even more expansive, and these are people that all of us engage with on an everyday basis. In my experience, as a proud queer and trans person, being trans and being in the queer community is something that is, that I'm actually really grateful for because of how much love and welcoming and community-centeredness that we have within that community. And there's also a lot of wisdom within our trans community that I think all of us can learn from to help us find these paths forward through these times that we're navigating together. I will say that with, with what has transpired in these last several years and what's transpired in more recent days, there are many people within our community who are reasonably scared, scared specifically for losing their health care at some point in time, some people who are scared of experiencing more violence as a result of what's happening at a national level. And so this resolution is really timely. I think we, like was said before, we really need to have hope. We really need to have the potential for people to see a future for themselves. And we also need, we need each other, and we really feel like Olympia is a place where, as a community, we already have a strong footing here, and we don't want to leave. We don't want to have to leave here. We want to stay here, and this resolution is gonna allow us to do that. So I just want to thank you for this opportunity, and I want to thank you for your considerations, not only of the humanity of the LGBTQIA2S+ community, but also in your commitments to allyship and true, like, actionable support to making sure that we are safe here. So thank you, City Council, and I really am excited to be a part of this really historic moment in time.
I'm sorry, we can applaud now. Public comment's over. That's just for public comment. All right. Thank you both so much. Stacy, you have more presentation?
No, I can just invite you to read the resolution, and last step is you have consideration for a motion to approve.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, so we do have a shared reading of the resolution here, and we will begin with Councilmember Madron.
Whereas, the City of Olympia is committed to fostering a community where all individuals are treated with dignity, equity, and respect regardless of sexual orientation, gender identity, or gender expression, and?
Whereas, the LGBTQIA2S+ individuals face ongoing discrimination, violence, and systemic barriers that threaten their safety, well-being, and human rights, and?
Whereas, transgender and non-binary people in particular have been vilified in political advertisements, and Project 2025 outlines further plans to remove established rights and decriminalize the existence of transgender people, and?
Whereas, across the country, there continues to be legislation enacted that targets LGBTQIA2S+ communities, threatening access to health care, education, and protections under the law, and?
Whereas, the City of Olympia recognizes the inherent worth and equal rights of all people, including LGBTQIA2S+ individuals, and seeks to provide a safe and welcoming environment for those who reside in or visit our city, and?
Whereas, as a sanctuary city, Olympia commits to protecting and advocating for the rights of LGBTQIA2S+ individuals by rejecting policies and actions that promote discrimination, harm, or inequality, and embraces and supports Washington's laws against discrimination, Chapter 49.60 of the RCW.
Now, therefore, the Olympia City Council does hereby resolve as follows. Number one, the City of Olympia expands its sanctuary city commitment to include LGBTQIA2S+ people, affirming its commitment to ensuring that all individuals, regardless of sexual orientation or gender identity, feel safe and supported.
Two, the City of Olympia strongly believes in and affirms the right of individuals to: a) seek, obtain, provide, or facilitate gender-affirming care that is legal in Washington State or in any other states where it should be legal had it occurred in Washington State; b) engage in speech or expression supporting LGBTQIA2+ people, including but not limited to discriminating books and literature, holding discussions, and drag or performances; c) to embrace and express their own authentic gender and sexuality, and to define what gender and family means to them, including but not limited to dress and appearance, structuring a family unit that works best for them, and sharing LGBTQIA2+ positive values with their children, and d) to define own gender, sex, with their, with, oh, sorry, with or without regard to biological sex assigned at birth.
I'm going to read through Tears of Pride, and I hope they look like rainbows from where you're sitting. No City of Olympia resources, including but not limited to city property or time spent while on duty by a covered employee, shall be used for investigation, assisting in investigation or detention of an individual on the basis of exercising their rights identified in Section 2. A) in the event any law or regulation is passed in the state of Washington which imposes criminal punishment, civil liability, administrative penalties, or professional sanctions on an individual or organization exercising their rights identified in Section 2. City personnel shall make enforcement of said law or regulation their lowest enforcement priority.
Number four, whenever the city collects or disseminates information about an individual or individual's sex or gender, it will be without regard to biological sex assigned at birth. The city will not collect or disseminate information about sex assigned at birth unless related to a criminal investigation of a violation of Washington State law.
Number five, the city will actively oppose legislation or actions at the state or federal level that threaten the rights, safety, or dignity of LGBTQIA2S+ individuals.
Six, the city commits to ongoing engagement and collaboration with local LGBTQIA2S+ community and cultural leaders to: a) reduce barriers to accessing resources and support for LGBTQIA2S+ individuals and organizations; b) maintain LGBTQIA2S+ liaison officers within the police department to access points of contact, advocate for community members, and build trust; and: c) collaborate with local LGBTQIA2S+ community and cultural leaders, working closely with event organizers, to ensure public safety while prioritizing the needs and well-being of participants and attendees.
Number seven, the city shall conduct regular reviews of its policies, practices, and public services to ensure they are inclusive, equitable, and affirming of the LGBTQIA2S+ individuals. Eight, the City of Olympia will continue to celebrate and uplift the voices and contributions of LGBTQIA2S+ individuals through public events, education, and partnerships with local organizations. Nine, if any section, sentence, clause, or phrase of this resolution is found to be unconstitutional or is otherwise held invalid by any court of competent jurisdiction, it shall not affect the validity of any remaining parts of this resolution. Be it further resolved that the City of Olympia reaffirms its commitment to diversity, inclusion, and justice, ensuring that all members of our community can live authentically and without fear of discrimination or harm.
So at this time, I'm going to pass my gavel to the Mayor Protem, and I will explain what we're doing here and why in a moment. So our council guidebook says that the mayor does not make motions. And so I'm temporarily passing the gavel over to the Mayor Protem to preside over the meeting. And the reason for doing so is because Councilmember Gilman so kindly requested that I be the one to make this motion this evening. So, thank you, Councilmember Gilman.
Do we have a motion?
I move to approve the resolution declaring Olympia a sanctuary city for LGBTQIA2S+ people. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
And now we'll continue with the remainder of what the resolution says, if I could find it. Thank you, Mayor Protem. This is why you have a mayor pro tem. Passed by the City of Olympia and the Olympia City Council this 28th day of January of 2025. Any comments from council? Councilmember Green?
Thank you, Mayor Payne. I just want to, so this is my third city council meeting, and I just want to say I'm incredibly proud to be up here for this. I just want to give a big heartfelt appreciation to our queer and trans community. This is, there's so much going on that I know can make it very hard to, to be here, very hard to stand up here and speak, and it just, it takes such incredible courage. And I just, I hope that, that what you heard here tonight is that we see you, we hear you, we want to find ways, and I really look forward for the council as well as working closely with the city to find ways we can take action on this and make this not just a statement, but really a living and breathing document to make our community the type of city that it should be for, for everyone in the community.
Councilmember Gilman.
I just want to commit to you that I'll continue to use my voice and my hands to support and celebrate the culture, as Arlo described, of art and love grounded in resistance of oppression. That, I think that's a beautiful definition of, of the community, and I want to say I see you, we heard you, you belong here, you're enough, and I love you.
Thank you, Councilmember Gilman. Next, we have Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. It's a pretty proud moment for Olympia. It's historic, like, only a few have been. And this is when the rubber meets the road, right? Because we have to hold each other accountable to actually implement. And I'm just so proud and thankful for all of the people in this room that have gotten us here today because this resolution is you, and this city is you, and I'm just so proud to be part of it with you. Thank you.
Councilmember Vanderpoel?
I am, I am, I am proud to be on this council. I'm proud for the work that-
I am proud to be on this council. I'm proud for the work that we do here. And I'm proud of the community that we have. As we're getting closer to this meeting, I had some, I wrote down some thoughts and, you know, and to be pretty frank, I'm glad that we live here because to me, it's so many members of the community that are friends of mine and family members and coworkers. And every part of my life, there is a member of the LGBT+ community. And to me, it's the elderly, it's the youth, it's... I, you know, part of it is also the fact that, you know, I have a kid on the way, and if that kid identifies as LGBT, I want that kid to have a community that they feel supported in. Even if they aren't, they'll have friends that will be. And so, you know, the last few days, this last week, has been a lot of anxiety, to be honest. And I'm glad that we're trying the best we can to create confidence in government despite all the craziness that's going on. Yeah, I had someone in my life that this last week, I said, "Hey, how's your weekend go?" And the first thing that came out of their mouth, because they were trans, is that they were looking at Canadian citizenship, which really affected me all day because I want that member of our community to feel safe here and not have to do that, not have to do that extra work and just... But it's difficult, it's insanely difficult. So I wrote down here that we, as a city, have a moral responsibility to keep focusing on needs of the public, come hell or high water. And so, to me, I think that's what we need to do. We need to do as much as we can for the people of Olympia. So, thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other comments? Mayor Payne?
The mayor pro tem kindly reminded me that she still has the gavel, and I'm not supposed to be calling the council members. Four times, I've taken the oath to defend the Constitution of the United States. Four times. Twice when I was enlisted in the Army. Once as a council member, and once as the mayor. And sometimes I feel like people think that the Constitution only belongs to them. Right? And that is something that, to be quite honest, infuriates me as somebody who served this country, as I know that so many other people who have served this country. And, you know, it speaks of promoting the general welfare of our people and to promote the blessings of liberty. And those blessings of liberty mean that we have the right to be who we are. And I can't for the life of me understand this preoccupation with who people are attracted to, who they're in relationship with, how they identify, how they express themselves. I don't understand that. And so sometimes we hear things like, "Well, you're the city of Olympia. Why don't you just focus on fixing the damn potholes and making sure the water runs?" And to that, I say, "We do that too." But we're being forced to have to do this tonight. We didn't ask to have to do this. We don't necessarily want to have to declare our city a sanctuary for immigrants and political refugees and for reproductive rights and now LGBTQIA2S+ people. We didn't ask to do that. But it's because of that preoccupation with who we are that that's why we're here, and this is why we have to do this. And I don't understand it, and maybe it's a good thing that I don't. But to our community members who showed up, who came here putting themselves on the line openly in a public meeting, requesting that the council declare Olympia a sanctuary city is something that I will always remember and something that I'm so grateful to all of you for. Because there were many times where I thought to myself that we should do this, and I tabled it because I wanted to see if our community wanted us to do this. And I knew it was coming, but I wanted you to spearhead it, not me. And then our council members took the lead, and I appreciate that. And I appreciate everybody that's had a hand in this, from our community members to our staff. Just thank you all so much. I hope that you feel some sense of relief that your city not only affirms you, but is celebrating you, celebrating us. And I look forward to a day where these types of actions at the local level are not necessary because our own federal government is attacking us. So it's an honor and a privilege to be your mayor and to be part of this moment as someone who identifies with the LGBTQIA2S+ community. Take care of yourselves, everybody. Olympia strong.
And I just have some brief comments. Thinking about community members that helped work on this, thinking about staff from many different areas that helped work on this, and then council colleagues. The last time many of you were in here, I'd shared some skepticism about this. So I thought, "Well, you know, what does a piece of paper say, anyway? Like, how are we really going to make it real?" And so many people touched this and made it real with tangible actions. And so, when folks that maybe don't know about sanctuary cities or don't understand what this sanctuary city means, this resolution, you have something that says, "It means these nine things, these nine tangible things that you can hold us to and hold community members to." So, thank you so much. A big, big, big effort. Mayor Payne, would you like to be the residing mayor now? Or presiding mayor?
Yes, please. All right. Any additional comments from council? All right, seeing none. I think it's fitting, if you are willing, for those who are present, if you would join the council in a photo, if you would like. I would love if you would be willing to do that. So please, join us. Okay. So that concludes our business items for this evening, but we will move on to council reports. I'll just begin with a brief mayor's report. So this past weekend, the city council met for our annual retreat
So this past weekend, we, the city council, met for our annual retreat where we discussed our council operating agreements for the year and shared a few pleasantries over a very lovely dinner. We also worked extensively on the city's work plan and had a very, very thorough presentation on budget sustainability with all of our staff and department heads and consultants who visited us, some who even flew in, just to offer their expertise on things like priority-based budgeting, which was really lovely. It turned out to be a wonderful retreat, and I think it was a success. And I just, again, want to thank all of my council mates for coming together and making sure that we had a very robust work plan for the year with consideration to where we are financially as a city. So thank you for that work. There has been quite a few speaking engagements that I've attended over the last couple of weeks. I will not list them all. I can't even remember them all, if I'm being honest at this time. But I will pass it over to council member Madron.
Plus one on the comments about the retreat. I think it was the best one I've had since I joined the council, so thank you all for that. Just quickly, land use and environment committee met on the 16th, and we did review and pass along the natural environment chapter of the comprehensive plan that'll come to the full city council. We had some very specific tweaks that we asked for, but it is ready for the full review. And I'll just say that I really appreciate how this chapter has evolved. You know, it goes, previously, it was very much about, like, the aesthetic beauty and what we get out of the environment. And now it's a little bit more reoriented around the connection between a healthy environment and a thriving, livable community, and vice versa, what a thriving, livable community needs to take care of a healthy environment. So looking forward to that coming to the full council very soon. And it did have input from the Squawson Island Tribe, Social Justice and Equity Commission, Olympia Planning Commission, PrAC, Parks Recreation Advisory Committee, couldn't remember what that stood for at first, and the Utility Advisory Committee. So all of, a lot of our advisory bodies helped shape that chapter up. And then we looked at our work plan, which, you know, we talked a little bit about in our retreat, and we are going to be looking at it again at our next meeting, just to review everything that we've got, maybe add a couple of things to the to-be-scheduled list so we don't forget it for the next year. It's a very full work plan. And I'll just note that Community Planning and Development is now referred to as CPED, Community Planning and Economic Development. And we also looked at their work plan for the year. And just one thing to note is that with some of the reductions that we made, they're at 2015 levels of staffing, and they think they're going to be okay with the workload they anticipate at the permit counter, but it is something they're going to be monitoring. So just wanted to highlight that. And then on the 22nd, the Regional Housing Council met, and we talked about doing a half-day retreat in May to, you know, bring together the Regional Housing Council, but also the city managers and some other folks who are engaged in this work, so we can all kind of get on the same page in terms of the purpose of the Regional Housing Council. There's some very specific things that we do in terms of funding recommendations to the county, and then there's language in our inter-local agreement that says that we can also work on, you know, regional policy, but there's just, we just struggled to move that work forward. So the goal of the retreat is to kind of ground us all in the same purpose, but also come out with some actionable items on things that we can work on together. We also agreed to send a letter to the 22nd delegation requesting that the Affordable Home Act bill get reintroduced. And this would involve additional 1% surcharge for the real estate excise tax for sales of property over $3 million, while also raising the lowest rate tier threshold for that charge up to $750,000. So, you know, a little bit of a higher tax on very expensive properties, a little less tax on the less expensive properties. And then I'll just leave it at that, but we talked about a few other things, but I think that's the relevant information here.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for council member Madron? Seeing none. Council member Vanderpoel.
Just one item. The Thurston Climate Medication Collaborative Executive Committee met on Monday yesterday, and one of the items that, a couple of items that we passed forward, the Home Energy Score Model Ordinance, this is a recommendation to all the jurisdictions. If all jurisdictions then do pass it, the whole process will be a lot faster than not because of it being a collaborative effort. It'll be coming to land use very soon. Other things is that the collaborative work plan, it actually had one item delay because of staff limitations, and that's the vehicles miles traveled study is going to be coming in '26, not in '25, because of comprehensive plan updates. Some of the other jurisdictions, I understand, of the were like, we wish that we had this year, so that as they're doing their updates, they'll have that information, but staff provided all of the information that they would take from to give to those jurisdictions anyway. So, yeah, that's my update.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for council member Vanderpoel? All right. Council member Gilman.
Thank you, Mayor Payne. The Finance Committee had our first meeting of 2025 last night, and this year's Finance Committee is myself, council member Green, and council member Cooper. We mostly discussed the work plan and had some great work with both the input from the retreat and additional staff work to fine-tune a year that will really focus on both this year's budget and implementing the priority-based budgeting model. So one interest we had, both we discussed at the retreat and we talked about last night, is ensuring Finance Committee and city council engagement across the year in the process. And if I may, I'd like to ask city manager Bernie to describe the schedule that we fleshed out for that engagement.
Well, thank you for that. Finance Chair Gilman. Yeah, we talked last night, just kind of hearing what we heard at the retreat about council engagement throughout the year. So we're going to, Finance Committee is going to hit the ground right away. In their February retreat, we're going to start to scope out some additional research that we need around additional studies around the budget and look at some of the revenue options that the council wanted to explore and get some feedback on kind of all those options that we need to look at, and then bring those right away to March, some of that research and some of those findings to March. And then start to scope out an initial council study session in April. So typically, you know, our budget kicks off in June, and we've kind of historically have kind of kicked off budget with council in June and heard the feedback to kind of start earlier and work throughout the year. So we've got a study session planned for April in advance of your June retreat, and then another check-in at your June retreat, and then another study session planned somewhere in the August timeframe to kind of keep working it before we really get into September, October, and the kind of the throes of the budget. So we're planning some check-ins, more check-ins than we normally do along the way at your request, and we'll scope, continue to scope that with the Finance Committee as we move forward.
Thank you, city manager Bernie.
That's my report.
All right. Thank you. Any questions or comments for council member Gilman? All right. Seeing none, and congratulations on being appointed as the chair of Finance. Yes, so two of the three committee chairs remain the same, and council member Gilman was appointed as chair of Finance. Congrats. Mayor Potemwen.
No reports.
Council member Green.
No reports.
Council member Cooper.
Thank you, Mayor Payne. I just want to say, after sitting through Finance, I also had that kind of great feeling about, what was my 14th retreat? Particularly, this is the first time it feels like there's a meshing between the committee work plans and a broader city council work plan. And that didn't, I didn't feel it on Saturday, but I felt it last night when Finance was really dialing in the work plan. And I just think that's a huge accomplishment, as I've seen the city council move from, like, uber caught up in the politics of the moment to be a unified body that's data-driven and impact-driven. It's really cool to be a part of. I think the, you know, the priority-based budgeting is going to take that to the next level and would be, you know, in my mind, I'm starting to think, like, ahead for all of you, like, how do you align the committee work plans for all of the commissions and the advisory committees into that broader work plan as well? I think that's when you start to see where the most value add from committees shows up in the work. And I know it's some work for the Community Livability and Public Safety Committee will be doing, so I'm kind of excited for what, you know, how that might drive those outcomes. I also just want to say out loud to the public, because it's no secret anymore, that that was my last retreat because I'm not running for city council this year. And I want to say that as a public service announcement, so a whole mess of people will run for city council. We have some great appointees, and there will be four seats on the city council up this year, and I just hope that some Olympians get excited to run for my seat. So thank you for that.
Thank you very much, council member Cooper. Questions or comments for council member Cooper? Mayor Potemwen.
At our, you're right, we adjusted, we as in the Community Livability and Public Safety Committee, adjusted our, what would be our last Wednesday meeting to tomorrow night instead in anticipation of trying to have some alignment with what was decided in the retreat. And so we're actually going to change our agenda for tomorrow night to be all about prioritizing all of the things on our work plan, including the added ones, and which ones might have to be deferred for another time. And also, 14 annual retreats for you, sir. But after the mid-year retreat in June, which we do hope you'll be joining us for, that'll be 30 retreats. If, in fact, it's been twice every year, 30 retreats.
Any additional questions or comments for council member Cooper? All right. Seeing none. City manager Bernie.
I have nothing to report.
Well, with that, with no further business before the Olympia City Council, we're adjourned.